Mr. Yule.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mrs. Flansburgh.
Here.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Here.
Mr. Calder.
Here.
Mr. Signor.
Here.
Mr. Chairman Denny.
Here.
Mr. Comenzo.
I'm here.
Mr. Tingley.
Here.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the summary of our last meeting.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Collins.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Flansburgh. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, motion carried. First thing on the on the agenda tonight, we have number one on the agenda is plug-in station online LLC 93 West Campbell Road. Applicant requests a waiver of site plan review to install five dual port EV chargers in parking lot near food court via Port Rotterdam. I don't think there's anyone here tonight to present that to us, but basically it's kind of a cut and dry, or want to put those chargers in for the new electric cars.
Yeah, I see they have them over at Crossgate Mall.
Okay, does anybody have any comments? Tom, where are you? There you are. Tom, any comments about the?
One question, is it a universal plug on those?
Like I said, there's no one here to tell us what it's all about, but I would I would say basically, yes, it is because I see it all at the markets. I mean, I think they probably do have a universal plug for most all the cars.
Yeah, well, that's what I figured it would have to be, or else you got to bring your own cable, one or two, so.
Well, okay, anyone else have any comments about that? Okay, at this time, I need a motion to approve the waiver.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Collins, seconded by.
I'll second.
By Ms. Flansburgh, okay. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, motion carried.
He got muted.
Got muted, Jack. Jack, nobody can hear you.
There you go.
There you go.
I put my notes in front of me, right over the buttons I'm pushing here. I'm sorry. Okay, get back to where I was. 93 West Campbell Road, applicant requests a waiver of site plan review, hold the car meet April 10th, 2021, and/or April 11th, 2021, in parking lot B, 143,325 square foot northern lot between New York State Tax and Finance, United Auto Supplies, and Vaiaport. I don't think there's anyone here to give us any information about that, but they have to, you know, they have to abide by our town codes for parking. I don't know if we're going to be involved with the mass gathering. I don't know. It's outside, so. Anyone? Tom, you have any questions or any comments?
No, I think it's a great idea. I think people would love to be able to get outside in April and walk around and look at the cars and, you know, just for something to do. Hopefully, the the 11th of April or the 10th of April is a is a good day for them. Non-snow day.
Okay, Lynn, Ms. Flansburgh, any comments about the parking?
No, no issues at all. I mean, I don't think it's going to equate to a mass gathering, and I'm sure there'll be social distancing and CDC guidelines out at that time that they would just need to follow, but I'm with Mr. Yule, having everybody outside. We'll probably look forward for something like that to do in April.
Okay, Mr. Collins.
No, that's usually when they kick off the stock car thing, too, isn't it, Jack?
I don't believe they're having that this year.
Okay, but I'm for it.
Yep. Mr. Signor.
I'm okay.
You're good with that. Mr. Calder, how about you? Are you with?
I'm good with that. Anything that could make that place getting busier would be fine.
And Mr. Del Sandro.
No, I agree with it. It'd be nice to have something down there.
Yeah. Okay, I need a a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the waiver. Sorry, Tom.
Ms. Flansburgh.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Yule. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, motion carried. Excuse me. The third thing on the agenda tonight is Martin's Food of South Burlington LLC, doing business as Haniford Brothers Company LLC, 1400 1428 Altamont Avenue. The applicant requests a waiver of site plan review to add a Haniford for-go service with parking lot improvements, add an updated signage and paint facade on the existing Haniford Plaza on 21.8 acre parcel. Is there someone here tonight to give us some insight? There's Branda Nielsen, I believe.
Yes, hi, Mr. Chairman. I'm Brandy Nelson. I'm a project manager with Ty &amp; Bond here on behalf of Haniford. And thanks very much for considering our request for a waiver. Haniford Brothers supermarket has been, over the last couple of years, working to roll out a Haniford to-go program. Basically, what this allows is a near-contactless grocery shopping experience where customers can email in their grocery orders and then a store associate goes ahead and picks that order and places it in a specified location in the store. You know, as a customer, I would arrive at a specified time, pull into some designated parking spaces, send a text message into the store. The store associate brings the groceries out to me, loads them into my car, and I finish my transaction with them on a tablet. And so the improvements that are done for the store to provide this service are to make modifications to a portion of the interior of the store to be able to properly store the food that has been ordered. And then on the exterior, what's done is typically one of the exterior doors is designated as the Haniford to-go door. A small 18 and a .25 square foot sign is placed above that door, says Haniford to-go, and we've provided an example of what that looks like in our packet. And then we tried to designate somewhere between five and seven spaces. In this case, we would like to designate six of the existing parking spaces as Haniford to-go spaces so that customers can pull into those spaces. They're generally close to that access door, and it provides a very short route for the store associate to go from the store out to the customer's car to load the groceries in. In addition, at this store, the store has had the Haniford branding that is currently there for a number of years, and the brand standard has changed, and there's a new color scheme. And so what we'd also like to do as far as exterior alterations is replace the roofing and do some painting on the facade and then update the signage to the new brand standard for the signage, both on the face of the store and also the pylon sign out in the parking area.
Okay, let me open it up to the commission to see if anyone has any questions or comments. Mr. Yule, I always start with you because I'm sure you might have an idea you'd be interested in.
No, it's I think it's a great thing to update that plaza. I didn't realize, I knew some of the Haniford stores had it. I didn't realize that that store did not have it because it's way across the other side of town from where I live, so I don't frequent that store very often. But when do you expect to start your project, Brandy?
I'm not exactly sure what the date is. Most of these that we're trying to get going right now, we'd like to start in the next couple of months. There's both an interior and exterior alteration component that needs to happen, and the interior work usually begins before the exterior work because it takes just a little bit longer.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Chairman. I haven't anything else, and I think it's a good thing for that, especially with with COVID and all the problems that we run into lately, so.
Okay, Ms. Flansburgh, any comments or questions?
No, I think it's, you know, you're catching up with other businesses that are doing similar offerings. One of the issues I would just point out, and I'm sure Haniford has done it at multiple other stores, so they've lived and learned through through their processes that they've had at one of the stores that we use a to-go service for. The only thing I would suggest is having proper markings for the the service person bringing the items out to the car as it's in a drive-through traffic lane. You know, just just to be sure that all the safety standards are there as well, signs and markings and whatnot.
Sure. So what we'd also like to do as part of this is there is a crosswalk at this location. We would like to repaint the crosswalk so it's more prominent. All the store associates, if you're a Haniford to-go store associate, you are trained specifically to take groceries from the store to a customer's vehicle. They wear reflective vests that are bright colors like you see on highway workers, and they use the crosswalk, and they're trained to just be aware of traffic and things like that.
Okay.
So safety is extremely important.
Absolutely. No, I think it's a great idea. It's right up there with everyone else that's doing it, and there's certainly a need for it, and it's very popular.
Thank you.
Mr. Calder, any comments, questions?
No, not really. I have no comments. Thank you.
Mr. Signor.
Great idea, Jack, especially with for for people with special needs.
Mr. Del Sandro.
And get some have someone help them get their groceries.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Now, I say it's a great idea, especially for people with special needs.
Okay.
So I'm good. I'm fine with it.
Mr. Del Sandro.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Collins.
No, no questions, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, at this time, I need a motion to accept the waiver.
I'll move.
Motion made by Mr. Signor.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Del Sandro. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, motion carried. You're all set, Brandy.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, Jet Enterprises, T14 LLC, 1400 1428 Altamont Avenue. The applicant requests a waiver of site plan review to operate Jersey Mike Subs on 1600 square foot existing tenant space, former former Cricket Wireless on 21.8 acres. That's at the Haniford Plaza, I believe. I guess you guys know where that is. Next to the Joe's Mo's or whatever it is.
Mo's.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, I don't have any.
John's favorite place.
Pardon?
Nothing.
Oh, yeah, okay. There's no one here to to give us any insight. Basically, it's a sandwich store, I guess.
Good sandwich. Very good submarines.
Okay, you've been there, Collins.
I have ventured forth in Latham. Yes, I have.
Very good, very good. Okay, well, I guess I'm just going to poll you all of you. Anybody got any questions or comments about opening of a new sub shop?
No.
Okay, I need a motion?
I'll make the motion since I can't wait for them to open.
Because you gave him a plus, yeah, okay. Motion made by Mr. Collins, seconded by Mr. Yule. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, motion carried. Okay. This is a public hearing.
Oh, he muted himself again.
Jack, you're muted again. Come on, you can do it.
There we go.
There you go.
I put my.
Don't be afraid.
My notes in front of me, and I leaned against it. I don't realize I'm doing it. Sorry, guys. Okay. Number five, Precision Construction and Remodeling and Precision Home Audio, 2697 Hamburg Street. The applicant requests a special use permit waiver, recite plan approved to convert an existing 2,564 square foot building into three tenant spaces. Precision Construction and Remodeling Offices, Precision Home Audio Retail Showroom, and Greek Me Retail Comic Books. 3.326 acres parcel, the former New York State Chief Policing, Chief Association Office Architect Keith Kramer. Keith is probably here, I think. Well, what it is, quick explanation of it, is that it was, like I say, it was Stewart's. No, excuse me, it was Stewart's, and now it was the Police Chiefs Association. We've been there, looked at it a while ago. The owners that previously bought it was going to be a Chinese restaurant or Chinese takeout. After they bought it, they decided not to go into it, but they do own it, and I got it. I guess they put it out for for lease, I believe. So we're looking for Amanda LeFond for Precision Construction.
Hi.
Okay, can you give us a little insight as to what you're doing?
I actually have both of the owners of the businesses here, so they can paint each one of their businesses. The first is Matt, the owner of Precision.
Okay, you have you're going to have to break that building up inside, I'm sure, and divide it up into three separate portions, am I right?
No, it's pretty well divided as it is.
Oh, it is already divided the way you're going to use it? Yeah. Okay, let me see if anyone of our, excuse me, of our commission members have a comments or questions. Ms. Flansburgh, I'm going to start with you. I think you should do.
Lead the charge.
Yeah, I know. I should give her a shot right off the rip, just me.
All right, I'll take it, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, can you explain how your businesses are going to run? Are they simultaneously same hours, employees, and such?
Oh, not same employees, so, but yes, pretty much same hours.
How many employees total? Like, I'm looking at the parking situation for what you'll have and what you may need.
Um, I think for now, it'll be one for Geek Me and two to three for the audio company. The construction part of this is pretty much just for the office space.
So for the one employee for office space for them to have?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all for me. Let's see what everybody else has.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Yule.
I'm looking at the plan that they put forth, the floor plan, the layout, and I see the entrance doors. I don't see a lot of exit doors, and I'm not the building inspector, so and I'm not the fire inspector. I'm just wondering, do you need a egress out of every one of these office spaces? Like, I noticed that the conference room has a, in the back, Geek Me, has a door going in. There are two windows, but I'm not sure whether those are big enough to get out if there was a fire. I noticed you got a couple offices that don't have any outside exit at all. Those are things that you'll have to go over with the fire inspector. You're in the construction business, so you're probably aware of what the codes are. I may be wrong in what I'm saying here. I don't think you'll have a problem with parking because I don't think these businesses will draw that much as far as people into them, so I think you should be all right there. That would be my only caution to you is to look at the the parking. And you did mention in your statement that you were going to pave this parking lot sometime in the spring?
Yes, the landlord's actually going, said that he was going to have it repaved and sealed.
Yeah, because it was in pretty tough shape when we, when I looked at it last year before they.
What I have to do is probably rip up the sidewalks right up against the building and reforum because they're pretty well shot.
No, okay. That I didn't notice when we were there. I know we had, it was where they were going to put parking, and the entrance is off William Street, but this should be a good building for that. It's just that, you know, I don't know what you need for entrance and exits out of each one of the, because you've got three different businesses in there. So that would be something that you would know more about than I would. So that would be my only caution to you. All right? That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah, we 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 went there, looked at that, Peter and I did, when the owners were going to make it a restaurant or a takeout place. And what you just discussed, discussed about the parking lot, we had spoken to them about that earlier. And I guess they're all set with the sewers and lines hooked up and stuff like that. It's all done in water. It's all the previous owners got that all ready for you. So let me see if anyone else has a, Mr. Collins.
Yeah, I was over there today, and there was a truck out front. I knocked, but nobody heard me. But so when you go in, you go into a little foyer, and then you go into the left. Is that going to be the
That's the audio.
Construction and the video place?
That's going to be the audio showroom when you walk, take a left, right out of the foyer.
All right, and where's the comic book place going to be in the back area?
Comic book is straight back through that pocket door.
Okay, no, like I say, like Tom, with the building code, you'll have to discuss that with them. But I was over there, and I just want to take a look, but that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Del Sandro, any questions or comments?
No, Mr. Yule asked a question I had. I thought it was kind of weird that there was only one entrance and exit in the building, but I guess that's going to have to be discussed with the building inspector. That's all I have.
Mr. Calder.
I'm no, I I'm familiar with the building, and I've been in there a number of times. That's that's actually a nice building. I I I'm glad to see somebody come in there. I hate to see another vacant building in town, and so I'm good with that. I hope it works out for them.
Okay, Mr. Signor.
I'm good, Jack.
You're good. Lynn, I already asked you, I'm pretty sure, didn't I? Yeah. Oh, that's just, this is a public hearing. So John, could you read the statement regarding submitted public comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can I just make a couple of, can I just make a couple of points for the record on this application before we get into that, please?
Sure, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, the first one is I discussed with Mr. Comenzo this morning kind of the procedural status of this project. It's my understanding that the waiver of site plan application, if approved, would result in the property having to comply with the previously approved site layout, which includes the parking as shown on the 2019 site plan approval, along with the landscaping and things of that nature. So that's kind of, as I understand it, the intent of putting it on as a waiver of site plan, just so that the board is aware. Obviously, it's a board decision on that. The second thing I want to note is that this is the reuse of of an existing building, and since the site plan approval in 2019 if the waiver is currently approved, and there was a negative declaration adopted under Seeker, since this would just be a reuse of the building, it's actually a type-two action under Seeker and is exempt from that. So there will not need to be any seeker action taken on this project. Those are the two things I just wanted to point out, Mr. Chairman, and I can go ahead and get into the public hearing notice if you're ready for that.
Yes, I am. Go ahead.
So as has been the case over the past year or so, this public hearing and this meeting is being held pursuant to executive orders authorizing meetings to be held without providing in-person public access. For this public hearing, a public hearing was noticed, was published in the paper. It was posted on the with the agenda, providing instructions to members of the public to provide comment on this application. In order to submit comments, there are three avenues available. One was to submit written comments to Peter Comenzo by email or mail. Those had to be received by March 1st at 4:00 PM. Spoken comments can be made during the meeting either by signing up in advance by emailing Peter Comenzo or calling his office line and leaving a message. And then obviously, the board's practice has been after we find out whether or not anybody has submitted written comments or signed up to speak, it's been the board's practice to call for public comments, you know, after that. So at this point, I'll ask Mr. Comenzo whether he received any written comments, email comments, or any messages of anybody that wanted to sign up to speak on this application.
Thanks, John. I have not received any comments or any requests for someone to speak at the public hearing.
Okay, John?
Yep, so, Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate now to call for any public comment that might want to be submitted that did not, of anybody who did not sign up.
That's exactly what I'm going to do. That's the style I'm opening up for to a public hearing. Anyone have any comments or questions? Is there anyone, any comments? I don't hear anybody. I don't see anybody here posting anything here. So at this time, I'm closing the public hearing. Seeker was completed on April 16th, 2019, and the site plans and the improvements. I need a motion on a special use permit for the conversion of the building into a three-tenant space. Motion for a special use permit.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Calder.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Del Sandro. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, motion carried. Motion on the waiver of the site plan for conversion of the building into a three-tenant space.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver of site plan.
Motion made by Ms. Flansburgh. Seconded by Mr. Collins. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, motion carried. You're on your way. Okay, you're all set.
All right. Jack, you did it again. No, not yet.
No.
You can do it.
There you go.
I'm waiting. I want to put my papers down. It must be, it's got to be. What are you going to do? Next thing on the agenda. Rotterdam Ventures, 55 Duane's Brook Road, final site plan boundary line adjustment review on construction of 200,000 square foot logistics building on 12-acre parcel, 188-acre parcel. 88 parcel, 188, yeah, 188-acre parcel, engineering, SMRT Engineering. Michael Gourd, have I got that right? Was it engineering?
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
We have some other team members here as well.
Okay, well, could you give us a little insight as to what what you're doing there?
Yeah, Dave, did you want to just do a quick intro?
Sure, yeah. Hi, everybody. It's Dave Ball, the L S group. We, I think we last, I was trying to remember as we're standing here, I think we last presented to the to the commission in November for preliminary site plan approval. Since then, Mike and Ken and Gretchen, who are on the call, have been in close communication with your town-designated engineer, answered a lot of questions, made a lot of headway. I think got to the point where we feel like we have a final site plan for you guys to look at and hopefully approve. You know, I guess there's there's been a lot that's happened. Basically, the building has remained the same size. The location of the building is the same as what we originally presented, and I think we've just populated the site plan with all the requisite details as far as infrastructure, stormwater management, everything that you guys, you know, need to need to see. So Clough was really helpful on all this and kind of, you know, bringing us down a path, and I think they represented your, the town's interests really well. So all that said, I guess we could pass the floor over to questions, or I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman, on how you want to proceed.
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go to our TD, Mr. Peter Hall, to give us a little bit as to what went on with him and what he investigated for us. Peter, are you there?
I am here. Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone's well. Yeah. Yeah, yes, as they've explained, we have been working very closely with the applicant and his team professionals since December on several iterations of site plan applications, reviews, supporting documents. As they've noted, you'll probably not notice much of a change in terms of the the building, location, orientation, layout, et cetera. But we have been working through a number of detailed engineering-related items such as grading, drainage, stormwater management, utilities, water, and sanitary sewer, and the team has been great to work with, and as a result of a number of iterations of review, CHA issued our final PDE review letter, which is included in your packet tonight dated February 20. uh, C H A issued our final T D E review letter, which is included in your packet tonight dated uh February twenty-fifth. I'll point you to that and just highlight a couple of the items in the letter. Um, item number one on page one, I just wanted to bring this up to the planning commission for consideration. As you know, one of the items is landscaping that we typically require. Um, the landscaping plan proposed for the project is is lawn seed only, and uh the applicant is not proposing any additional landscaping elements that you might normally see, but given the project type and location within the within the business park, industrial park, um, that seems to be in keeping with the surroundings, but wanted to defer that to the planning commission for their consideration. In addition, item two, we cite uh town code two seventy-one forty-nine pertaining to landscape islands uh where we have parking in excess of twelve spaces. Um, not less than ten percent of the total interior, the parking lot should be landscaped. Uh, and again, here, the applicant is seeking a waiver from the planning commission uh justifying that the parking lot is interior to the industrial park and will not be visible from offsite properties. The applicant also states that the lack of interior landscaping within the park parking lot is consistent with the industrial park uses and existing conditions. And here too, we would agree with those statements, but uh defer to the planning commission um to issue the formal waiver in that regard. And then um a couple reminding uh remaining i- items uh uh again, speaking to my letter of February twenty-fifth, uh, it is a type one seeker action. We understand the um uh town planner has coordinated a lead agency and the town planning commission has already adopted lead agency designation. So obviously, before taking action on the application, the planning commission should issue a determination of environmental significance. One of the items that um uh we worked through very closely with the S M R T team is with regard to uh storm drainage. Uh, the project is connecting to the existing storm sewer that runs through the site and the industrial park. And uh despite their best efforts to to um to do uh the best they can to reroute storm sewer and add new storm, they're connected and restricted to the existing storm lines on the project site and downstream. Um, so um making the best of the situation, there are still instances when that storm sewer system does not completely convey the ten-year storm event, which is a typical baseline design element. Uh, so we we respectfully request that a hold harmless note be added to the site plan indicating um among other things, but it says the the owner and applicant acknowledge that the proposed privately owned and maintained storm sewer conveyance and stormwater management systems have been designed by their engineer to collect and convey the ten-year storm event and periodic ponding and stormwater will occasionally occur on the site. The town of Rotterdam and town designated engineer shall not, shall be held harmless for this designer condition. So that that's a note we recommend be added to the plan. And and then lastly, we we had a number of recommended conditions of approval that are included in our letter, uh including final sign off and documentation from D P W Water Sewer, um our office, um concurrence from the fire department, um uh access and easement agreements in in place or to be provided, sign off from the town stormwater management officer, coverage under the Speedy's general permit for stormwater discharge from construction activity. And then, of course, um as part of the bill and permit process, town town sign permits be issued. So, um, i- in synopsis, uh, you know, we're really pleased with uh the the pro- good progress that's been made in the collaborative effort and pleased to report to the planning commission that um should the board be prepared to do so, we would support issuance of a final conditional site plan approval.
Hey, Peter? Thank you. Uh, I'm going to pull the board and see if anyone has any comments or questions about this new warehouse. Uh, Mr. Yule.
No, I was just waiting to hear what Peter said. I read through their uh comments and then they got very technical. Um, the ones about the landscaping, I agree with the uh the developer that the there isn't, there really isn't any landscaping inside the industrial park, and it really can't be seen. So I don't think that landscaping really is an issue here. Uh, as far as the islands being landscaped, I don't think they need to be landscaped either. But I do agree with the uh stormwater comment that he wants to put on there because of the uh problem that they had with the stormwater. Uh, so whatever they want to work out with there. But I look at it this way, when we hire a town designated engineer, and when you make him happy, you make me happy. So uh and and Peter does a, Peter does an excellent job. He gives a, you know, he gives you his comments upfront. He doesn't piecemeal them to you. So uh this is uh, this is something that I uh I was looking forward for him to talk about. And he said he would issue a a letter with conditional approval, and I would agree with that. Okay, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, Ms. Flansburg.
Yep, just a couple of things. I agree on the landscaping with the just seating. It's in the industrial park. Can you clarify, is it landscaping the islands when there's twelve or more spaces, or is it not having the islands at all? Mr. Loholt, can you speak to that, sir?
Yes, uh, there are no landscaped islands essentially um
Right.
Uh, that are proposed. So the the code states that ten percent of the uh of the interior island should be landscaped. So I that that that's a subject of interpretation. I've seen different uh applicants respond in a different way, but in this particular case, there's there's no landscaped island as such proposed at all, um, which which is consistent with the industrial
With the industrial park, right, which I have no issue with that as well. I guess the only thing I would just ask our attorney, this is a first for me, the hold harmless clause. Is that something that we can do as part of this process? It's not something I have heard. I mean, I've heard of it, but I haven't seen it here.
Uh, absolutely. The alternative to doing that would be to require a different design, but if the town designated engineer is um is uh willing to accept a note on the plan to hold um the town and the T D E harmless, then then that's acceptable.
Okay, and as long as it's acceptable to the developer to have responsibility for it, is what that means, correct?
Well, yes, I mean, the alternative the developer has is to is to do a different design, so.
Okay.
Yeah, um, we we've reviewed that and we're comfortable with that language.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, I'm in the same school of thought as Tom. We have designated the town designated engineers for a reason. They get into the technical nuances of of all parts of the plan, and I appreciate your uh willingness to work together with Peter and uh as always, Mr. Loholt, you've done a wonderful job.
Okay, Mr. Collins.
No, I have no comments. Like you say, they always do a good job. They all work together. And if Peter's ha- happy with it, then I'm happy with it. That's all I have.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, Mr. Signor.
I'm good, Jack.
You're good. Okay, Joe. And uh Wayne, Mr. Calder.
Uh, no, I think it's a, they're big, good neighbors over the years, uh, many years, actually. So I think the project is gonna gonna be a good one for them. And uh, I'm happy with it. Thank you.
Okay, this is not a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, can I uh, can I just step in with one note, please?
Yes, Mr. Tingle.
Um, if the uh planning commission is inclined to act on the application tonight um and wants to incorporate the conditions in Mr. Loholt's February twenty-fifth letter, um in particular, item four and item five on page two, I would suggest that the motion be made to approve the site plan with those conditions.
Yes, Mr. Tingle, I have that right in front of me, just as you just said it, with conditions. Okay, uh motion to adapt, motion to adopt the seeker draft negative declaration as prepared by our town planner. I need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Yule.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Del Sandro. And okay, now we need a motion to approve the site plan with the conditions.
You gotta, you gotta take
Now you gotta pull the board.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Negative declaration.
I went so, you didn't have so many questions. I was, you you got me uh going ahead. Okay, we need a vote, I guess. Go ahead, though.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburg.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes, thank you. Uh, okay, motion to approve the site plan with the conditions that we discussed. Motion to accept the site plan with conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Miss Flansburg.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Yule.
Nope, nope, I think.
Yeah, me, Jack, it don't matter.
I'm sorry, Mr. Signor. Uh, okay, vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburg.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Ah, he's muted again.
Muted again, Jack.
He's having a bad night.
There we go.
Better put a piece of tape over that button.
I ain't got much room, you know, it's it's not a big desk and it's a I can't wait to, I can't wait to get back to the town hall so we have our meetings in our, you know, open space.
Jack, did you
You gotta hold, Jack.
Pardon?
You need to vote on that, on that last motion to approve the site plan with the conditions. We didn't hear your vote.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You got them all now, Maro?
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay. Okay, uh, seventh thing, next thing on the agenda, M O S Developers LLC owners in Christopher Evans, L C six hundred Consol Avenue. The applicant requests a special use permit waiver of site plan approval to convert an existing seven thousand three hundred twenty-eight square foot building into two tenant spaces, J C Structures Mason Warehouse existing in a twenty-two thousand two hundred square foot tenant space for retail auto sales detailing on forty-seven, four forty-seven thousand seven hundred thirty-seven square foot parcel. Engineer, advanced engineering. Mr. Nick Cost is the engineer on the project. Nick, are you on?
No, Nick's not with us tonight, but I'll be representing advanced engineering, Tony Mantello.
Tony, where are you? Okay. Okay, can you give us a little insight as to what they're going to be doing there?
Uh, basically, this is an existing facility with uh with separate tenant spaces uh existing and uh the applicant's proposing to uh to move in a uh an auto detailer into the front space, which is twenty-two hundred square feet, consists of an office, a restroom, and a uh like a small warehouse area with two overhead doors.
Okay, uh, let me just quick, I'm looking for the I know I have it here, about auto sales. Tom, you you know, we're talking about auto sales like we did for that.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm looking for the, here it is right here. Motor vehicle sales article under our town codes. Okay, now you, have you uh have a copy of that, Tony? Do you know the copy of our uh motor vehicle sales?
I I don't have it handy with me. No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Well, uh, I'm gonna pull the planning board and see what they have to say about it, what questions they, comments they may have on this project. Okay, Tom, I'm gonna give it to you because I know that's something you were involved in once before in auto sales.
Really? Okay, um, first of all, I don't think we can vote on this project tonight because I don't think we have enough information in front of us. Uh, the first thing is we need to see a floor plan of where the detailing is going to be, where the showroom is going to be, where the offices are going to be. I know they have twenty-two hundred square feet, but we can't uh we, I don't see it in my mind. I went over there today and looked at it, and it's the building looks nice from the outside, except the only thing you have is the office on the left-hand side with glass windows and a door. Then you have a large garage door and then a solid brick front. So if you need a showroom to display at least two cars under the auto code, so I don't know how you would have a showroom and nobody could see the cars inside. And there's, there was nothing on the plan that showed where any cars for sale would be um displayed outside, whether there's going to be two cars displayed outside or ten cars. I know we put a limit on the last auto place that came in. I think it was fifteen cars, but I don't think there'd be enough room there. No. And I would like to see uh more details on this. Not that I'm against that project. It's a, that end of Consolus Avenue is is, looks pretty nice, and that building is in pretty good shape and uh, but it's a wide open curb cut, so I don't know if you're gonna put a uh a curb along the front or how you're gonna do it, but the cars can't be any closer than ten feet to the property line. That's another part of the code. So uh I think we need some more details before we can actually vote on this. Uh, you understand what I'm talking, Tony?
Yes, yes, very clear.
Okay, all right. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Other than that, uh, you know, we get some more information and bring it back.
Okay, I I know we had a auto auto sales once before. We were kind of deep involved with it as far as having the showroom and bathrooms or toilets or whatever you want to call it, and uh uh, what else was there? Conditions, how many cars and how many, where they're going to be parking, the parking space. It was all part of our motor vehicle uh uh special regulations. Okay, anyone of Clark, any comments or questions about this auto sales?
No, I think it's a good project for there, but like Tom says, we need a little more detail uh about the inside of the building and outside, but um, I'm a favor of project if we get the right details to vote on it.
Hey. Mr. Del Sandro.
I agree with both board members. I think it's a nice project, but we're gonna need more detailed information. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, Mr. Calder. Wayne.
Uh, not to cover that again, but I agree with them. And uh, I was just wondering if if all thirteen uh we would call it comments were dealt with. I don't see it here that they have, but but uh, I guess it'll come out next time they come in.
Okay, and Mr. Signor.
Yeah, I'm in uh, I'm in agreement with the rest of the board members, Jack.
And Miss Flansburg.
I'm in agreement with the rest, and I was gonna uh say what Wayne had said. You know, I didn't know if the applicant has the the D P W list of comments of the thirteen items, you know, if those are addressed uh properly, then I I would be in favor of it as well next time we see it with more details.
Okay, well, at this time, we have, we're not we're gonna, we need a motion to declare lead agency at this time. That's all we need.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I think, Tom, your microphone's off.
Mine is.
No, Tom.
Tom, okay, go ahead, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that we declare a lead agency on this project to get it moving.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
That's right, Mr. Collins. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburg.
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro.
Yes.
Mr. Calder.
Yes.
Mr. Signor.
Yes.
Chairman Denny.
Yes. Motion carried. Finally, I'm paying attention. I'm scrambling with papers here, where to put them. Cutting off the mic. Okay, uh, last thing on the agenda tonight is Paul and Michael Gordon LLC, thirty fifty-nine, thirty seventy-five Broadway, concept site plan to construct a nineteen thousand two hundred and seventy-seven square foot commercial building on consolidated two point seven five acre site, engineer A P D Engineering, with Tim Shag, Shag, if I'm saying that right, from engineering, he on, yeah, he's online. Okay, uh, could you give us a little insight as to what you're doing there?
I can. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen if that's okay.
Yeah, sure, outstanding.
The visual here. All right, I I trust everyone can see that.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Uh, okay, so I'll just give you a quick little uh overview of the site and what's being proposed out there, and then answer any questions you may have. Uh, again, uh, I guess first thing, good evening, members of the commission, and thank you very much for your time. Uh, again, my name is Tim Shag. I'm a civil engineer with A P D Engineering and Architecture, and I'm also joined this evening by John Ekman with Aldi. Uh, our purpose of appearing before you is to present the proposed Aldi grocery store to be located north of the intersection of Broadway and Prince Town Roads. Uh, the site address for the project is thirty seventy-five Broadway. Uh, the first few images that I've put together here are just uh Google Earth captures, just to kind of give you an idea generally where the site is. Um, you probably have a good idea where it is in town, but just to go through it real quick. Um, you probably have a good idea where it is in town, but just to go through it real quick. Uh, that one's quite a ways out. This one kind of zoom in a little bit more, uh, real kind of real rough where the property lines, the lot limits are. And then finally, this is more of a 3D image again from Google Earth, showing where the old CVS store was that's been demolished now. Uh, the sporting goods store, uh, that was also demolished, and then the Subway restaurant, uh, which will remain as part of this development. Moving on to the next slide, this is the Google, Google, that, excuse me, Google Earth view from Wallace Road looking towards the site. On the left here, the white building is the old CVS. Straight ahead is the sporting goods store, and off to the right is the Subway store. Uh, this is a good vantage point. Um, one of the things we're doing as part of the proposed development is having the new site entrance line up with Wallace Road, so it'd be a straight through, uh, for anyone coming from this direction. And then utilizing the, uh, signalled intersection at that point. Moving on to our next slide here, uh, you can see this is the survey for the site. Outlined in blue is the CVS parcel. Outlined in red was the old sporting goods store parcel, and then outlined in green is the Subway parcel. Together, these three parcels make up about 2.75 acres, uh, in total. We can also see the existing site access that was coming off that. Uh, you had a couple entrances here off of Kenmore Avenue, and then several entrances coming out onto Prince Town Road and Broadway down here to the south. Moving on to the next slide, here we have the, uh, proposed site layout for the proposed Aldi store. The, what Aldi's proposing is to construct a brand-new 19,455 square foot store with 108 parking spaces. The primary site access, as I mentioned, is going to be right here, uh, directly across from Wallace Avenue, or Wallace, yeah, Wallace Avenue, uh, into the site. Secondary access points are going to be right here as a right turn only into the Subway lot, into the Subway building, and then a non-signalled intersection here over, uh, over by Prince Town Road. As I mentioned before, the Subway restaurant, the building itself is going to remain. Uh, we're gonna make that fit into the site plan. As a part of the site plan, we'll be redoing the parking around it, and then also redoing the paving around it as well. The front entrance for the store, uh, you can kind of see, I'll zoom in a little bit, but you can see where the front doorways here are right here on the building itself. Uh, this corner of the building is a tower element, and on one of the elevations, which is one of the next slides, uh, we can see that. Off to the left here along the long wall of the store are the four handicap ADA parking stalls, uh, for the store, so direct access into the front of it. And then over here to the left side, you'll see parking spaces numbered one through four. Uh, this new with, uh, with, new with the COVID now, um, these are the curb-side parking spaces that Aldi utilizes. Uh, they have a side entrance here where employees can come out, uh, put the groceries into the, uh, trunks or backseats, whatever may be the case, so people can order online and pick up and, and leave the site. Uh, let's see here. Zoom back out. Delivery trucks, uh, they will enter in through the signalled intersection. They would enter straight towards the building, take a left, pull up to the curb, and then from there back up into the loading dock. After dropping out deliveries, they would then pass out, go out same way they came in, and again, leave through the signalled intersection. The back portion of the lot, Aldi's proposing to leave that undeveloped at this time to offset the amount of impervious area, uh, that is currently on-site. Ideally, we're gonna try to reduce the amount of, uh, impervious area, like I mentioned, to eliminate or re, significantly reduce the amount of onsite stone drainage stores that may be necessary. As far as utilities for the site, all the utilities will come off of Prince Town and Broadway, uh, through the main driver, through the parking lot, into the building. For the site signage, Aldi's proposing a new eight-foot-by-10-foot, um, the sign itself is eight-foot-by-10-foot dual-sided pylon sign out in front. Uh, that will actually be a, a dual sign, it'll have both Aldi sign and also Subway underneath it, on the banner. And then for the on-building signage, uh, again, this tower element that sits right in the corner here, and I will jump to the next sign or the next, uh, slide. These are the proposed elevations here, you can see the 10-foot by 12-foot, uh, Aldi sign that appears in the front entrance, and then also on the side here. So as we look at the different elevations here, the front elevation is what you're gonna see from the signalled intersection facing towards, uh, Broadway and Prince Town. The rear elevation is what you would see, uh, facing towards Kenmore Avenue. Uh, this side elevation with signage, again, you'll be able to see this from, uh, Prince Town Road and also the, uh, plaza that's to the west. And then the side elevation here, with the railing, you can see that's for the loading dock, that's gonna face towards the residential area. Uh, but we are putting in a fence to screen that, as well as there's existing vegetation, um, that would also screen that view. And then the last slide I have here, this is the building footprint, uh, very similar to, um, Aldi grocery stores. Uh, they very much use the prototypical interior, so the customers are used to the layout of the store, used to the look of it as far as the location of the refrigeration freezer units, the aisleways, the checkouts, all very standard for an Aldi store. And so that's what I have for this evening. If, uh, there's any questions, I can do my best to answer.
Okay, well, uh, I'm sure some of our members have some questions, myself being included because I only live two blocks or maybe three blocks away from that location. I used to shop there for many years when it was a market before it turned into a drugstore. So, uh, okay, uh, Ms. Flansburgh? How about you? You, you live close to it, so...
I also live near there, along with, uh, Mark Del Sandro as well, so, um, super excited that this is a possible application before us, uh, as the project. Huge improvement to that whole area between the burning down of Taylor and Vadney's to the empty CVS for however long, so I'm very much looking forward to whatever we need to do to get this project to move forward and, and have it be done in the correct way.
Okay.
I don't have any specific questions at this time. Um, it looks like they have a good start to it. Um, I do see on our agenda that you are seeking to enter a, an agreement with a TDE. I think that would be helpful with the consolidation of three separate properties, Taylor and Vadney's having been there for a long time, as well as CVS and the previous businesses that were there for a long time. I think it'd be good to know what they've got going on, uh, so they can start off on the right foundation.
For sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mr. Del Sandro?
Uh, I can't even tell you how happy I am and, and the residents in the side of Rotterdam. We've asked for this for a long time, and, um, I, I really appreciate you picking that area. You know, you don't know how happy you've made the residents there. Um, you look like everything is, is great. I mean, I think you got a big jump on it, like Ms. Flansburgh said, and, um, that's all the questions I have. I'm just happy that you're here.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
No, I think it's a good project. I'm an Aldi's fan. I go to the one on State Street, and then I go to the, the newer one up on, uh, Central Avenue. They have a nice layout. I'm happy for Rotterdam. Uh, the only question I have is, you know, for years, everybody went out that very back entrance, but I, I understand what you said, but that was, a lot of people are very used to getting out the back, but other than that, but you know best, but I'm very excited for this project. Uh, we'll do anything we can to help, uh, move it forward, and, um, I'm excited, and I am an Aldi's fan, so you should do extremely well in that area. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Signor?
Uh, great presentation, Jack. I do have a question. When he mentioned, uh, the, um, trucks coming, the delivery trucks, I'm assuming they're tractor-trailers? Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct, yes.
Okay, so they come in off of Wallace, they go straight, they make a left, then they straighten out in front of the building, then they back into the loading dock? They have to back around?
Yes, that is correct, yeah. One of the things we always do is, uh, we have a, what, it's called an auto turn, it's a program, so we can make sure we run all the truck turning movements as part of the design, to make sure that the vehicles can make it without hitting any other vehicles or mediums or anything like that, so...
Okay, so that, that was, that was my concern about the safety of these trucks. You know, backing up, I mean, you've got customers that may be there when the trucks are there, and, you know, you're gonna have to be careful, uh, about the pedestrians. And is that a usual way to bring a truck in, to pull it in and then back it out in front of the building to the lot, uh, loading dock? I mean, does that seem unusual?
No, not, not really. Uh, I would say, uh, at least 85 to 90% of the Aldi sites that we do, very often the truck does come up into the front like that. Uh, the aisleway's a little bit wider, so it gives them more room for maneuverability. And it's also my understanding, a lot of the deliveries are made off, off-hours. So when the store isn't, isn't open, so they'll, they'll deliver through the night, whatever it might be. A lot of the goods are, they're, they're all prepackaged, so the truck driver actually back in there, go into the store, drop off his pallets, and then he'll leave, and then the store employees come in in the morning, and they'll do all the stock shelves, stocking all the shelves then.
Well, um, the aspect, the safety aspect was, was my concern, that, you know, these trucks backing up, people being around, vehicles being around. Okay.
Yep.
You all set, Joe?
Yeah.
By the way, I used to do that for a living, and there would be, those trucks would have no problem backing around that building. Not at all. If they're class-one drivers, they won't have a problem with it. Mr. Calder?
Well, um, I want to tell you, it's been a long time coming. Uh, I know a lot of people over the years have worked and tried to bring something, food-type restaurant or store, rather, to that side of town, and like Mark said, uh, this is gonna be good for us. Really is. Um, I, uh, a lot of people worked hard, so, anyway, good project, and I'll do what I can to help out.
Very good. I also live close to that, to the, that location and the neighbors in that area, uh, knowing that I am involved with the planning board, always questioned me, and even the members of our planning board have been questioned from the neighbors because we live so close. And they're all looking forward to, uh, marketing this end of town, as they, as they call it. So I'm hoping that it'll, it'll, it's gonna be a project, a, a big plus for Rotterdam. Uh, at this time, I need a motion to declare lead agent.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we declare lead agency for this project.
Mr. Chairman, you never called me.
Yeah, you didn't call Tom.
I didn't call Tom, I'm sorry, Tom. Go ahead, Tom, with your comments, I'm sorry.
I, uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, I agree with all the other board members. Uh, I'm a 75-year resident of the town of Rotterdam, and, uh, it just goes to show you, if you live long enough, things come for, full circle. So I started my, uh, employment career at the old Saveway Market in 1960. Like, a lot of times, sitting across the street in the, in the Tops Diner, I look out the window, I think to myself, 60 years ago, I used to work in that building, and now the building's not there anymore. But it's, uh, as I, I called a friend of mine that I worked with who lives in Florida, and he said to me, uh, he said, "Well, the other good thing is you can still remember that you worked there," so that's a good thing.
There's no age discrimination, they'll give you a job.
Yeah, well, that's the only, that's the sad part, is I couldn't go, I couldn't work there unless they hire greeters. Maybe I could be a greeter there, but I couldn't work there anymore. Uh, because the old Saveway was owned by two gentlemen, and they may be relatives, I assume they're relatives of the, the developers. One was named Bernie Gordon, and one was named Benny Gordon. They may be their fathers or grandfather. They were the ones who ran that. But, uh, the Saveway Market was a small neighborhood store, it was smaller than what Aldi's is proposing. Uh, and, uh, but it was a, you know, a small footprint, and people used to walk to the store, they would drive to the store, and you would see the same people, week after week, there, uh, coming in for their groceries, people from Delanson, Duane'sburg, Prince Town, Rotterdam Junction, anybody west of Gildalan Avenue, all those neighborhoods in the back, Kenmore Avenue. So they were, you know, that was a, a great thing, and I know the local residents were devastated when the PNC market closed. So, uh, this store that, and I looked at, my, my daughter lives in Glenville, and this store, she pointed out to me, is very similar to the Glenville store, which also has a Subway off to the right-hand side as you pull in their main driveway, uh, used to be a Pizza Hut, I think, it's now a Subway. And the store is there, and she loves the store. In fact, she volunteered to come tonight and, uh, give them her impression of the store because she's a regular customer there. So, uh, this, this is something that this side of, uh, the town needed, and, you know, every time we approve another gas station or another beauty parlor or another bank, I always get the, the question of where, where's the supermarket for the west side of town? We need a supermarket. This, as far as I'm concerned, this is gonna be like a magnet for this side of town. You're gonna draw people in because you have no competition at all. You're not, you're not facing any competition here, and you are, you know, you're, you're gonna be, uh, very successful in this, and I, I can't wait for this store to open. The, uh... I've been on the planning commission for 18 years, and you finally, uh, you know, you finally showed up with the supermarket, and I'm wondering what took you so long to get here. But, uh, one suggestion, the only suggestion I would make, and it was brought up about the rear entrance, and I'm not sure if you understood how that works, but that rear entrance let people drive in and out of those back neighborhoods to get into the Price Shop, or not the Price Shop, or the PNC parking lot or the Saveway parking lot. Even people that lived on those back streets would walk in with their gross, little handheld grocery cart or bag. So you, I think you're missing, uh, an opportunity there which would open up those back areas, because anybody from this neighborhood, Ms. Flansburgh, Mr. Denny, uh, Mr. Del Sandro, know the rat run, so you could go out that way and scoot around and get back to Prince Town Road or get over to Broadway. I lived on Edgewood Avenue when I worked there for three years, and I walked from my mom's house over to the, the store. And, uh, you know, there was a lot of, a lot of areas. In fact, I called my other buddy out in California this afternoon, and we got talking about the store and brought up some, some memories about it, but, uh, I think this is gonna be a, a great thing, but I, I really suggest that you look at that entrance coming in off of Kenmore Avenue being a car entrance and exit only. No, no delivery trucks, because I don't think it was ever used for delivery trucks. I think it was only used for, uh, pedestrian cars and pedestrians walking through because the, uh, they all came in off of Broadway, and they would pull in, back in, or come in on the side of the building when it was PNC, uh, when it was PNC or Saveway. So those things need to be, I think you should really take a look at that, because the neighborhood is used to traffic going in and out of the back of that. And if you close that off, you're virtually closing off all those neighborhoods in the back, and you're forcing those people to come around to Broadway and Prince Town Road to get into the main entrance. So I think you're making a, a mistake there, and you should really look at it, have your traffic engineer look at it. But like I said, this is gonna be a magnet, it's gonna draw people in, and, uh, if we don't get this passed, my wife's gonna divorce me because to get this thing going here, so, uh, please, uh, go forward with this from here, and as you heard from all the board members, you've got our complete support on this. Okay? That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Yule, but, but looking at the, the drawing here, the site plan that they showed us, it's gonna be kind of difficult for them to open up an entrance on that back side, because the, the way the building is setting on the property, uh, there's not really a roadway around it to get out to Kenmore. There's not a room there, that's the loading docks for the trucks are there too. So they'll look at it, I'm sure, and we'll, we'll see what, what their ideas might be.
That's what we call going back to the drawing board.
Exactly, that's what, they got our, they got our ideas, so I'm sure they'll, they'll come up with an answer for us. Okay, now at this time, I'm sorry, again, I'm skipping over things, but the motion to declare lead agency, I need a motion.
Okay, let's try again. Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that the Rotterdam Planning Commission declare lead agency for this project.
And Mr. Calder seconded, I guess.
Yes.
Calder? Seconded by Mr. Calder. On the motion, please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, motion carried. At this time, I need a motion to authorize the planning commission chairman to enter into a agreement with a town-designated engineer to assist in the planning commission in the review of this project.
I'll make that.
Motion made by?
Joe Signor.
Mr. Signor. Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Mr. Del Sandro. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Flansburgh?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, motion carried. I'm sure you're all, I, I'm sure everybody's in agreement about this project because we're all really enthusiastic about it, so we're hoping that it, it'll come together for us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. On, on behalf of the county and the town team that's been working very hard to, to bring this project forward, I want to thank the town supervisor, the deputy supervisor, the county leadership, Gordon Development, Jeff Gordon couldn't be on the call tonight, he apologizes. Uh, Peter Comenzio, uh, many, many, many of you, um, you know, we worked very hard to, um, get control of the, the Papaleseal property and accrete that property with the CVS property, and, um, we're very grateful for all these interests in this site and for moving, uh, taking this step forward tonight. They're one of the fastest-growing retailers in the country. in the country. Uh, they're a, a very prominent, uh, name, and we're very fortunate that they are, uh, you know, moving forward, uh, with this, uh, site this evening and beginning the approval process. I want to thank all of you for your enthusiastic support. Uh, we heard this, I, I went and got my vaccine yesterday, and a woman, I no sooner got the shot out of my arm, and that woman came up to me and said, "What are you doing about that old CVS site in Rotterdam?" I hear, I hear everywhere I go in Rotterdam, and so bless you all for, for moving this forward tonight, and it's been a concerted effort. Uh, we've been, I've been calling Peter, burning up the wires, and, uh, the supervisor, and everyone involved, uh, to, to move this forward, and we're very grateful for everyone's, um, enthusiastic support. Thank you, sorry to take your time.
Well, we, as a planning commissioner, as a chairman, I'd like to thank you for being involved, and you've, you've, I mean, you've been, uh, trying to give us, uh, a little help in getting that property u- useful for that pro, used for that property, I'm sure you have, because my office is right there with Peter, and I know at times you and him have been discussing what's going on, and how far we're, how, how advanced it's getting, and I'm, we're very glad that it's gone as far as it has. We appreciate the help you put in to get it, to get it started.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Now that we know that we've all been approached over the years on what's going to happen, now the next question we're all going to get asked tomorrow is how long of a timeframe? Should this work its way through the po- process, you know, that it needs to go through? How, um, incentivized is Aldi's to kind of, you know, appear?
Fast track it.
Yeah, well, I guess we all know.
We have to make the foundation, but we're a little too old.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know the process, process, though, I'm sure. We know how long it might take for them to finally get started.
John Ekman, the company is on, I don't know if you want to speak to this, John, or?
Yeah, Ray, I can, I can definitely speak to this. Um, so I appreciate the enthusiasm and the interest, um, from everybody, uh, on the board, and, and Ray yourself, uh, very much appreciate that. Um, I think it, it really obviously depends on how quickly we move through the next eight weeks. Um, my intent is to be open before Christmas.
Outstanding.
So, a lot has to go right, um, in the next, uh, eight weeks, and a lot has to go right in the next six months to make that happen, but, uh, that is what we are, um, setting out to achieve this year.
You did a great job in Glenville. That was a beautiful store in Glenville.
South Central Avenue.
Very nice.
Well, we, we're all pushing, uh, you know, we're all, uh, pushing, have it, have it, make it work, so being that we all are involved, and, uh, the town itself, our town supervisor and our deputy supervisor, uh, they're very enthusiastic about it, so I'm sure it'll help us along getting the process, uh, through as fast as we can get it through, through proper procedures, so.
Of course.
It'll, it'll happen.
Thank you.
Soon enough. Okay?
I know one person will be there, my wife, she loves it. You'll scare her, Ray, I'm sure.
The first circuit I look at, I'm sending the paper, it's always unique.
Okay, uh, at this time, well, we can call for a adjournment if you guys are, have, uh, discussed this far enough.
I'll make the motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Collins. Del Sandro, thank everyone, uh, for tonight's procedure, and, uh, good night, and God bless.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.